All right, what do you call the order of the April 9th Town Councilman, Marshall, Virginia? Welcome, everybody. First order of business, a draft minute from the December meeting. Any questions, observations?
If not, do I have a motion to the city?
Second? On paper?
On, all right.
All right. Treasurers' report, Mr. Gobol.
Thank you. Total consolidated assets of the town of Washington has a 331, 2018 of $547,078.68. During that same period, total consolidated assets of Washington Water Works was $22,934.13, and the wastewater works was $1,0466.99. March 8th, we pumped 926,700 gallons, we backwashed 34,300, leaving us $912,400 billable gallons. We billed 575,547 gallons. We sold another 8,000 gallons, leaving us treated but not yet billed 328,853 gallons. Total income for the town of Washington, March 2018 was $21,294.42. During that same period, the Washington Water Works income was $6,442.11, and the wastewater income was $12,243.45. The tax bill bills to be paid and the additional bills to be paid. There's really nothing unusual there, other than the wastewater recount, you see, that our loan payment for the Virginia, BRA, Virginia Resources Authority, for the wastewater plant semi-annual will came due. That's $88,745.11. Any other questions you would like answered? It's payday for the town council, as you can see up in the top. And the additional bills are also attached. And that is all.
Any questions? Comments? Do I push you to approve? How many? Do I have a second? See? Bill on here? I don't think, I don't think it gets us anything complicated. Yes, all in favor? Planning Commission?
No report, I think we have something to talk about under the old business. Nothing to report now.
ARB, they have no applications this month, so they're only going to be... Mr. Bennett, Town Attorney?
Nothing at all.
Before getting on business, let me mention two things.
Actually, I have one question for the Town Attorney, if you don't mind.
Sure.
I just want to ask for the procedure. Now that we're having to run this summer, or we need to apply in order to run, I just wanted to find out a little bit about the procedure for running for election.
Actually, I was just about to talk about that.
Oh.
Well, actually, maybe you should. Let me just, let me say something, then you add to it. Let me give the headlines. As everybody knows, we have an election November, whatever, first Tuesday in November. Having changed our schedule from May to November. Anybody who wants to run needs to file by June 12th of this year with the... Pivotal, current, with the Election Board. Remind the election is for mayor, separate election for treasurer, and then there's an election for Town Council. So anybody who is running, be they current members or potential members, need to file by June 12th. So that's what I had to say. John, you have?
The only thing, because of the change in the election date, the city members, the council, the mayor, and treasurer, their terms will carry over till December 31st. And then after that will be two years, two years cycle.
Is that four now?
Four.
Fred, did you have any other question?
Just one other.
Yeah. The main thing is June 12th. Secondly, Gary Curry, this is because it's Gary Curry and I and John Wazinski, met the end of last week with a gentleman from Chantel, Chantel vein, Shendou Telephone Company. Works out of Valley, but they do a lot of work here, they do a lot of subcontracting for Sprint. They have worked out arrangements with the library, county library, as well as the high school and elementary school, to bring in fiber cable. My technological skills here are limited. But the highest quality, highest speed, highest volume into those two entities. And they will be bringing it into the county offices here in town. And it will be available to businesses here in town, and maybe some other people if you're near the high school or whatever. So an individual business could ask the new pay to hook up. But here's what I happen to think is quite exciting, though. The technology is such that by adding on a device of some sort, at one of the points where this fiber comes in, one or more points, it would be very easy for us to have a situation where there would be total wifi access to everybody that comes into town. Is it every block, I'm not sure, or is it go, would it work half a mile outside of town? You know, I don't know. All that stuff would get worked out. But the reality is that for not too much money, we could make sure that everybody has wifi access in the town. Visitors or anybody, which I happen to think would be terrific. And the extent that the council would have to get involved, I would push very heavily for us to do that. Secondly, and somewhat related, again with another kind of device of some sort, attached to these things, one could dramatically improve the cell coverage in town. There are different technologies, different whatever. But if at the end of the day, we could have cell coverage in this town, again, when I say in this town, so it would be outside of town as well, up to some distance. I think that would be fabulous. These guys really have their act together, they've been doing a lot of work sort of under the radar, as far as I can tell. And they are ambitious about really getting stuff working well in the areas I talked about, just to solve the problem of people that live up a hollow and don't have digital access. No. But it will be beneficial, library beneficial, the school system beneficial to the town, beneficial to, I'm sure, some additional. So I think that's very exciting. I jokingly said that I can imagine, this image cuts both ways, I suppose, but sort of combining our history of George Washington and moving the technological role, I can envision the faux George Washington on a horse riding down the Christmas parade with a functioning cellphone in his hand. Mixing up two parts of our history. Okay, old business. We got draft, after much work, well, it's a very good work, between the Planning Commission and John Bennett, we have what I think is a final draft ordinance for Airbnb. And with that, let me turn over to Fred and George John. Everybody has copies of it. And a lot of work has gone into this. And of course, we've been talking about it for months. It's not a criticism, it's just a complicated issue. Travis, John?
The Planning Commission came back with two points that they appreciate all the work that's been done so far. They came back with two recommendations. The first, under 4.3, which is that the owner must have a parking plan that ensures adequate parking for each structure. And then the second was, I'm sorry, it's not 4.3, it's 3. Scratch out, it's hard to see. That 4 is actually a scratch.
Oh, is it a scratch?
There should be 3 there. And then under 5, which looks like 6.5, the short-term rental must be offered by the owner, who is also on premises to manage at, should say, all times when guests are present. And so those were the two recommendations from the Planning Commission that we brought in. And it didn't get in there, but should be at all times.
I have a question about that. I know exchange on place today. Does one interpret "all times" as being every single minute there's a guest there? Or does it mean if someone's there for two minutes, essentially the owner is there for most of those two times? It's all really literal? And it shows that you want...
I'm sorry. I will give the non-legal answer, and then I'll leave it to the learned. I'll give the correct answer. But I think the point is, you can interpret it at times as that person has to show up for five minutes during the whole time that a guest was there. So if we have to err in terms of language, I think we would rather err on the point of saying of all times, assuming that the person, the owner, should be there for the vast majority of the time.
Yeah, you just, John, you added that. Because I think it's unreasonable if the person's got to be there like every minute, the guests are there.
I think you have to...
But I get the point of it.
You have to say something, but I think it's interpreted in the context of modern life. Where the owner might go to dinner, you might go towards him to go shopping, but you come back and you're there in material fashion. Not gone for three days or a week or whatever.
Well, I think we all get...
Well, guests are there.
Now, I think we're all in the same degree on the concept, it's just, I just work, the way it's written, somebody could come along and say, well, I mean, it could be, you know, could be, shall we say, overly precise. If in the legislative history here, we make it clear that it's most of the time, virtually all the time...
I think what you...
Or is that just getting too complicated?
I think you started getting into, are you talking about 95% of the time, 90% of the time? Who's going to judge that it's 95% of the time?
But are you talking about 100% of the time?
What happens is that it seems that unless you want to go into a huge amount of detail that you can either leave it as at times or at all times. And understand, as Mr. Bennett says, there may be times, there may be periods during a guest's stay that the owner may not be there. But I'd rather err on the side of setting a higher standard than leaving open that a lower standard could be observed.
How do you define it, though? I mean, that's...
Well, again, therein lies the rub. Do you want to spend the time to put down some kind of explicit percentage of time that someone needs to be there? And if you do that, who's going to judge that?
But isn't one, can't you say notwithstanding brief errands or something like that? Because brief is not so defined as all.
But someone who's in will wait for five hours, that's brief within the relative. And again, I don't know if that follows the spirit of what was intended by the Planning Commission and their view on this.
So the owner doesn't have to live in the dwelling anymore? He just has to be there if somebody is spending it, right? Why was that changed? Why wouldn't just be in the dwelling? Well, that's something that we need a lot of that question.
That's where it is at. The owner's got to be there, the guest's on premises.
Well, we don't require a B and Bs. Someone doesn't have to be there every minute if they're guests.
They're there most of the time.
They are, right?
Yeah, sure. And he wants to be.
And but the owner has an owner occupied part of that, again, too. In fact, the owner occupied, if the owner lives there, the owner will be there most of the time. If the owner just owns and doesn't live there, then you're getting this probably going to be there 95% of the time when there's guests or not.
Why don't we put "as needed"? Who is also on premises to manage as needed when guests are there?
Yeah, drop the temple piece.
Because then you're going to be flipped the other way. I don't want you to do 10 minutes a day.
Yeah, is the intent that we don't want people just renting their houses and never being there, right? That's basically the intent. So you don't want someone who's renting their house for one week and the next week, and they're never checking in, and they don't actually use that house as their own personally. Is that the right way to say it?
Well, there are guest houses.
There are guest houses.
So I have to...
They should be managed, though, by someone who's here checking in. So it's more of a check-in that, I mean, as a B and B owner, we check in with our guests. We make sure that they're there, we make sure everything's going well. But we're not on premises 100% of the time. Maybe our housekeeper is there, maybe we run out for an errand while guests are also out. For instance, we have guests at dinner right now. We're not sitting in our B and B waiting for them. So I think that's reasonable, and there should be a... I think doing it based on a percentage or not in time is probably not the most clear way to do it.
I kind of think it should be a owner occupied residence to be in there. That's kind of a, you know, you don't want someone buying free houses in town, and then just kind of jumping from house to house when there's guests there, kind of stopping in for a few minutes. And they're running off the business from buying up houses and renting them out.
I think that's what was said, the owner's got to be there. Another possibility, I'm right with Fred on this, that I was sitting here thinking, that's put something in there, manage at times when guests are there, that's just, it's too wide open.
Actually, from an English point of view, there's no difference between manage at times... There's no difference from an English point of view, from manage at times to manage at all times. Times embraces all the time, right? So it's exactly fine as it is. Putting the word "or" is superfluous.
Yeah, I take the phrase "at times," partial times. But at times, you know, not all the times, but, you know, lawyers always use term "work."
At the time, people are present, that's the time, right? Goes with the word "present."
What's required for that? I mean, they're still staying there even when they go out to dinner. So you're saying someone's got to be in the house, or they can leave when they're out to dinner.
Actually, sending them for at times is actually a patient. That's what Google says.
I was thinking about this, is there some way to say it in a different fashion? I thought about material times substantially, but what is that? Reasonable times? I thought that, you know, it just opens a door, but essentially makes it unforcible.
Well, is there really saying, I don't know the phrase, is that word? You just have to say at all times, except for those instances when the owner, you know, is engaging in, you know, personal activities. I mean, you say, you're going to go out to dinner with a friend or see a movie. You're going to go shopping. You got to go to the hardware store. So it's those time, those periods, you're not there. But effectively, you're there while guests are there.
Well, then again, if the guests are there, they're sleeping, do you have to be there? Even if it's not your primary residence, and just sit downstairs in chairs, they're in bad sleep. For eight hours?
The idea is that a lot of times, you may have an emergency or something might happen in the evening at night. And so, yes, the idea was that, that I think part of what we were talking about, Carolyn, forgive me, correct me if I'm wrong, but the idea is that it was really the owner was in residence. Is that...
Yeah, I mean, you could put when guests are staying as opposed to are present. It meant that guests would not be there overnight, themselves.
Well, how about going back, leaving that bit alone and going back to on premises? Do they have to be on premises? Can they not be in their own residence within phone call as opposed to being out of...
So easily accessible, as we do at some...
No, I think we thought they need to be, they need to be standing at long guest's stand. So is... They're not in another house down the street.
Well, what about over there, where he's not in the same house as they are? Because it's too far.
Well, let's debate, I would say what should be the standard, and then we can sort out if there's any violations.
I'm just saying, there's going to be exceptions.
What if you change to property?
I'd rather have very high standards and be willing to drop all of those standards if we want to on a case-by-case basis, rather than have low standards and try after the facts, get people to adhere to a higher standard.
I agree, I think that's better, like I said. Establish a higher standard and allow an exception. You've got two properties, two structures of the same...
But that's a real example that you just mentioned.
But could that be handled under, you have to come in with an S and P, and they could have, they have to have conditions? Would that be something that you can handle under condition? Probably this case, the owner lives next door, but he has to be present next door in the same building? You understand what I'm... Okay, so they're still going to have to come in with an S and P, right? Is that right?
There's three or four different conversations going on.
I just want to know if they have to have an S and P to have one of these, right? Or do they just have to meet in a registration form?
Especially if for one time.
Right, one time.
But they have to keep everything updated with you. Something changes, as required by the draft here, they have to update the information with you.
Well, that's when you could handle these very different, like, these different cases, right?
Especially if it's for...
No, I think, I think there's standards for everybody. I think the clear consensus from the Planning Commission is that, you know, you don't want the situation where someone's got five properties and maybe not as good in any of them. Talking about telephones or down the street or whatever. But this is really intended to be sort of...
Well, if there's two buildings on the same lot, that would be the same premise?
Premises, yes.
Okay, so that is my question there.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, okay, then that goes away.
Yeah, the typical legal definition, anything within the curve. If this is like the fence for the whole property, and there's three houses inside that one property, it's all free.
Does this happen here that they're required to pay B and Bs and lodging?
It's, you have to follow returns, I think this is...
I know in one version it was, but I believe, but don't we want that? Maybe it is in yours.
So if that were to be additional condition, perhaps something along the lines of, the S and P is granted on the express condition that the operator remain current in the payment of all required taxes, well, just meals and lodging taxes, all meals and lodging taxes to the town.
Do you need to put it in here, or do you have, wherever the language is for the meals and lodging packs, is it better to put it in there than anything that is a short-term? That under, certainly have right now, B and Bs are under the meals and lodging packs. You have ends, you have... Could you add another category there of short-term rentals, rather than put it into this ordinance?
My instinct is you want to have it in here, maybe in there as well. But I think you... The reality is, someone could walk in and ask, well, what do you have? What's the thing for Airbnb? And if this is it, it seems to me it should must start to be clear, you got to pay B and Bs and lodging taxes.
Yeah, and that puts some motif into, to keep the S and P in good standing. They got to keep them curved.
Do we want to add a number 11 that, with a short-term rental, is you required to pay as a lodging tax?
So there are subject to same meals and lodging taxes with B and Bs.
Or just subject to meal and lodging?
It doesn't show the lodging, right?
Yeah.
As a lodging tax, it should be subject to national...
Then do you refer in that number 11 to... Be on a document, so that way they can go to that and see what is the pursuit of the property. But so they do know what we're reporting, when I'm supposed to do this. Right, what I'm thinking is, give them the records. So if there's a question, they know where to go.
You could just say add to the pound, meals and lodging.
Right, that's to some extent, make sure that that, those words are in there.
I have a couple of things I want to ask about. Under the definition of short-term rental, it says it means the provision of a room or space that is suitable or intended for occupancy for dwelling and saving lodging. So I was thinking, perhaps we might want to change the "or" to "and" because it could be intended for occupancy, but be unsuitable if you do the "or" in the first place. So short-term...
So you're wanting "and" instead of "or" in that first?
Right.
This is how General Assembly found it. This is from, it's from the adopted rule.
But we're writing on...
It gets into a question, we really want this as a required definition to adopt the ordinance under the authorizing legislation. Let me say this. Let me say this, get, um, safest course would be to leave it as is, but when you make amendment that, um, cleans up the language as well as the General Assembly did, it'd be a high probability that it could look to be unfavorable for the economy. But I'm going to.
Well, so now.
What? Why?
Don't ask, keep stopping.
I'm just saying.
Does this ordinance have to go with the General Assembly, General?
This is the, that's, this is from the House bill, the legislation that created the authority of localities to adopt these type of the ordinance. And they, they, in the bill, they put in these definitions right here, so, so you see.
Okay, did you, did we just, sorry, let me answer.
Uh, yes, I guess I would, uh, make a motion that has two parts to it. Part number one is to add under, um, number five, that says manage at all times. Again, that's keeping that higher standard. And then second would be to add as number 11 on present.
Condition of SGP.
As a condition of. So, anybody who wants to do one has to do an SGP. Okay, so, as a condition of the special use permit, the operator shall timely report and pay all meals and lodging taxes to the town.
As for the town, what?
I, I, I think that's all you have to say, you don't have to give two.
Well, timing, you have a definition of that. I mean, timing, what for one person might be six.
Time, no, it's time, what is every time will be required by the town.
Okay, okay, it's, you know, that's.
As required by the town's ordinance.
The town determines that last tax day.
So, the first part was they must be, it must be managed full.
You're doing two different tasks at once.
I'm. Yeah, I didn't get the first part.
I think it's one of their time. Well, I get it.
The, the motion is two parts. Part number one is, as I originally, um, put forth, um, I think to follow the spirit of what the planning commission was saying, is that the short term rent, number five should be, a short term rental must be offered by the owner, who is also on premises to manage at all times. Okay, I'm sorry, that all in there.
I just wanted to hear that, I didn't get the, the first part.
Sorry.
On premises.
Yeah, at all times, to manage at all times, the guests who are present.
If I may, I would suggest, this doesn't matter in form here, that on paragraph 11, add just a standard severability clause, that, you know, if any portion of this ordinance is declared unenforceable for any reason, the main provisions shall nevertheless be enforceable according to their terms.
Yes, I don't know what you're saying, yeah.
Well, I didn't get that.
Oh, I'll get it.
So, um, Mr. Bennett, so you're just gonna leave it the way it is, the definition of short term rental?
Um, that, I, this was just my observation, I don't.
Well, it's.
It certainly makes sense. Certainly makes sense, this is what, and I was just saying, the, the General Assembly said it this way, so.
I'm not tracking, you're saying Mary Ann's suggestion makes sense?
Yes.
Okay, then is there any, I would say, in fact, the General Assembly wrote it a certain way, is there any reason we can't do that and put and or?
You always leave yourself slight, the door slightly ajar if the language isn't precisely what the General Assembly, but, no matter how erroneous.
You can't, you can't just say we're just smarter than they are, you can't say that. Appreciate it, but I wonder if it just, it was a typo, it would have, it was lost, I doubt.
All right, let's move on if that's what you wanna do, then we keep it that way. Um, the other thing I noticed is that operator, the definition of operator, um, to be consistent, shouldn't we be using the word operator rather than owner? Because if, sometimes it's operator, sometimes it's owner. Say where it says number three, owner must have a parking plan, don't you wanna say operator?
Um, yeah, I could say operator.
And number five, where it says the short term rental must be offered by the owner, should I be operator?
Number five, that would be owner.
That should be owner, number five. Because we're talking about the owner of the, of the property, whereas, um, there's nothing that talks about operator being the owner, any other thing.
Who is the first one? Number three, where it says owner should be operator. But the definition of operator includes owner.
And then it goes on to allow a lot of other things too.
All right.
So, you know, if you look at that, it really opens up the door that, that a person could buy fifty buildings and these to various parties who would then qualify.
Oh, I see, okay.
As operators, which is effectively.
Yeah, I got it. All right, the other, the last one I thought was, should maybe, um, firm up a little bit, is number nine, where it says the operator should offer to the town to, from time to time, current certification from Airbnb. What does from time to time mean? And, but, who's gonna tell the person, the operator, to, that they have to bring in the certification or whatever?
Well, the, what I was trying to say is this, that they have to keep with the clerk a current certification from one of these reputable companies. Now, their certification, current certification may change. They can change companies, the company itself may change requirements or whatever, issue a new certification. So, I was just trying to make clear that to the extent that things may changes with certification, they have a duty to report that to the clerk.
Can I offer that? Uh, I think y'all have a hard time getting documentation for that, cause Airbnb, VRBO don't give you certification. Anyone can get on.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what certification you need to tell it or not.
Just if you wanna be clear about it, you can show that you're listed and you haven't been kicked off from those sites, but.
It takes a lot to get kicked off.
Yeah, there's no, like, piece of certification that you can get on. Very many of you have.
Yeah, we definitely don't wanna get things for bad reviews, and that's what that, so. I think the main. I think that would be certification. Point that, um, the planning commission was trying to get across is the importance that there be some standard of quality. If the certification means that they are in good standing with Airbnb, then if they don't have a specific gold star accreditation or something like that, then, then to be in good standing with Airbnb, I think is, is a measurable that we're looking for. Certainly, the planning commission was looking for some kind of measurable of quality. Well, if I heard you just being affiliated with Airbnb or VRBO, that is some measure more than offering that word. Right, and, and, and I think we understood that that may be the case. And so, certification may be for too high flying word, but, okay.
I've got a thought on that. Um, perhaps change it to read, the operator shall furnish to the town clerk from time to time current certification of good standing with Airbnb or other reputable. So, since these companies don't actually furnish the certification, the operator will come in certified that they're in good standing.
Yeah.
Or, or do you certify, seems, from what I'm hearing, rather difficult. Cause you could walk in and say, all certified, they have a good standing.
That's what I, that's what I was gonna say.
So, what I'm, and then when, kind of incorporating Mary Ann's, kind of, might that number nine say that have a minimum, no listed annually, the operator should provide evidence from Airbnb or reputable that they are in good standing? And if we wanna put a little more teeth into it, that.
And you could put the views in there.
You do that, but then you might add teeth to it to, if they fall out of good standing, that is also a trigger to update the town.
When I, uh, when I read from time to time, I interpret that as the town may choose at its own, uh, may choose when it wishes to ensure that, that, uh, operator has current certification. So, I would take out the annual, I would take out anything like that. We, the town council may decide that the town clerk should receive it on an annual basis, but by having the language of from time to time, could also, uh, allow us, if we hear something in between, say, January first of one year and January first of the next year, of some, um, malfeasance or what have you, that we would be able to ask for a certification at that point.
Can you be able to do that with your SGP anyways?
They need what?
Not, unless it's a spell.
They just put it, require at the town's discretion, if you hear something.
You can't say discretion, you have to.
It could be annually for a town request, if you wanna set a time.
I purposely left out any timeframe.
Yeah.
Because Laura's got enough to do already, I can't try and skip it all. So, but at the same time, if there's a problem.
Then you can.
Yeah.
Call them, yeah.
And that would be the town's discretion.
So, current, current certification and evidence of good standing.
TM four.
No, certification. And so, the certified, and give evidence of good standing with Airbnb or other reputable person, person, per term rental agency. That just meets the, the good standing.
You've given enough clarity, enough clarity in all of this to, to vote?
Vote, you have to, um, offer up to the advertising or joint public view of the planning commission.
You know, Fred, you have to make a motion.
You need to make it. No, just a few minutes ago. I asked for a clarification, too, uh.
How is it, you can, you can, do you want that to be, you stand by that as a motion? Do you want a second?
Yep, I understand that we cannot make a motion at this time, but it needs to go back in front of public reviews.
No, you can make a motion to change the document.
You gotta change the document, then.
All right, then I'd like to make a motion.
We did already.
Can I amend that motion?
Yes, you may.
Because I've been looking forward to the opportunity to amend this one.
Okay.
All day.
Okay.
So, you've already had the first two amendment, uh, the first two parts of the motion. The third part of the motion is to change in three, from owner to operator, for our, and in honor of our editor. The fourth component would be to change nine to read current certification and good stand, uh, and.
Evidence of.
And evidence of good standing.
With.
With, instead of from.
And then add a, um.
And then the twelve. Well, I already had, that was part of the original motion, so that's been added. And then the twelve, the, the final part.
Eleven.
Eleven was the motion about paying the meals and lodging taxes. That was part of the, first part of the motion. And then the final part of the motion, for those of you who are still following, would be to add as twelve.
A severability.
A severability clause, to be the standard written severability clause that Mr. Bennett will provide to the town clerk.
Was that that part of, it's important to all of us?
Yeah. Is that it? That's it? I'll say that. I'm gonna repeat it, I'll say that. Jerry, I would forever need to do that.
Yeah. How's your?
Yes, sir, um, I know it says, um, just one kitchen, I know I've gathered here late and everything, but, uh, some of the older homes, which would be some of maybe the older, um, residents that would want to rent out a room or something, a lot of those homes have like, a summer kitchen in them, you know, a great big canyon, so they say it's one kitchen home. So, I don't know how that works, when you have like two kitchens, some homes do have two kitchens.
And if you have several homes on one premise, then they'll be separate.
The planning commission.
One or dwelling.
The planning commission.
But that's not saying some of the dwellings do have one kitchen.
The planning commission really, um, held very strongly that if, if you start talking about multiple kitchens and we weren't thinking of summer kitchens or anything like that. We wanted to try to keep it very tight and not have like a commercial kitchen or, or multiple kitchens in this, who represent multiple entities. So, um, I hear what you're saying, and I think, um, those kinds of unique situations would best be served by, uh, an SGP or whatever other means is necessary to allow them to, to, to be able to address their special nature of that particular premise, that particular building. That would be my recommendation.
Which, I understand you say, since everyone has to come in with an SGP, they raised that question and we deal with it in an intelligent, common sense way.
Yes.
We could do that.
Operator.
Good point, sure. Okay.
We got a first and a second.
Seriously.
Yeah, and then a first and a second, so.
Okay, we'll call.
If no, the mayor should ask if there's any more discussion. You have to ask if there's any more discussion.
Is there any more discussion? Jerry, done?
It's a lot of different role.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I don't like the all, the all times.
Three and five.
Five.
Well, I, I agree, I, I thought it was clear that, that, in our discussion, that, maybe I'm missing stuff. I too don't mean, I don't believe it should mean one hundred percent of the time, every minute somebody's there, but I, I sense that the discussion here is no one really meant quite precisely that, it's like. I know you don't want percentage, but. I know you don't want percentage, but.
And common sense coming into this one. I think, I think you could assume that people are not considering it at all, so unless there's profit.
So if we're in the middle of a roll call, I'm presuming she's saying no because of her exceptional five, and I say yes.
And I say yes, so it's.
So it's.
One, no, six, seven.
I never.
Any change in votes?
Five, one.
Six.
Appreciate you now.
There's seven of us here. Oh, six of us here. Five, one.
Thank you.
We have some problems with the count.
All right, is that, that subject? All right, change.
Oh, so now you have to make a vote.
To authorize a public hearing.
With a joint public review.
I move that we authorize a joint meeting of the planning commission and town council to review the imposed ordinance. And if you publicly advertise, end up being a public hearing.
I'll, I'll second.
At our next meeting.
Is that a good date for PC?
Should be, it's May 12.
14.
May 14.
And all safer was a roll call. Roll call, it's just a wrap?
Yes.
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 All right. Next subject is the authorization of a public hearing on May 14th for the town budget. Oh, I'm sorry, task force, I jumped over there. Grab some red. Task force. Brad, do you want to update on that?
The, I offered today, and I apologize for the last minute nature of it, but we talked about the last town council meeting that these task force meetings should be open to the public, which means that we have to publicize them. And what I want to do is create some language, at least for the first notice that would be put in the paper so that the people in the town would have an understanding of why we're doing this and what the purpose of them are, and so on and so forth. So this language is what I'm proposing, and I appreciate any edits, any changes, any corrections to put in the public notice. And then there would be a third paragraph which says the X task force will be meeting at such and such time at such and such location, in such and such venue. So basically what I'm trying to do is provide a template for each of the task forces to use at least for the first public notice to provide town people with, or town people and non-residents with, with information.
And the public notice requirements are, in terms of timing, the same as we use for any other public meeting?
I presume so. And in fact, I realize now that there should probably be a sentence that says all members of, I don't know how you want to do inviting people to serve on the task force. You want to do that, or you want to invite people once they show up to the meetings? I'm not sure. Whether you want to put it in that those people are invited to participate on the task force, or whether you want to have the task force as formed. People are appointed and then if other people show up at meetings and they want to be part of the task force, they can be certified.
Do you want them to be appointed versus just randomly? I mean, there could be certain people that would want to be on these committees that might be troublemakers, something. Do you want to have them appointed to the task force?
By whoever is the chair of the task force or by, remember, not by the town council, I'm sorry, by the task force.
I'm just saying, do you want it to be, you just walk in the door at meetings and you're automatically on the task force, or?
I agree, it's a good point.
Right, and I understand that, that's why I bring up the question.
Well, I like your frame a few months ago about in terms of probably the public is invited to attend the public task force meeting.
Yep.
Don't be on the task force, they come to the meetings and they get such and such, give their input and participate.
So I would add a second line to the second paragraph, the public is invited to attend. The only other question I have, and I don't know exactly how this should be done, but normally it's always good to have one person who's kind of the focus for a group that is meeting, who can make sure that things keep moving along. I don't know whether we want to appoint or have members of the town council volunteer to be chairs for the various task forces, but it probably would be worthwhile. I would be happy to volunteer to chair the housing task force since I'm already on that one. I don't know how the town council wants to do this, but I think beyond just this.
How typically the committees elect their own chairs?
Then how do we get the original, how do we get the first meeting underway? How do we ensure that the first meeting gets underway with the reach of the task force, at which time chair is elected?
Yeah. You, people say they're appointing temporary chair for purposes of conducting the election of officers for the committee.
For task force.
For task force.
Which is fine, I understand that process. How do we get that first meeting going?
For the purposes of how you're beginning, I think you have to, I think the people who are starting the whole program have to be that temporary person, don't they?
Could you, could you, could your meeting essentially all task forces involved, everyone is going to be involved? And then out of that, you start splitting and designating, that could all be done in one meeting?
Kind of a general meeting?
Yeah. It's sort of, sort of the kickoff for.
I could do all of them.
Where the, for each task force, there's a consensus as to the first day of the meeting?
I like that, I think it's general.
Doesn't depend if you want to be on more than one task force. You have a meeting, everybody, and then you kind of go on.
But you have five signed sheets, you're a comedian, and all of it will be left?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think you should be the driving force behind that first meeting date.
Well, it looks like since I've been doing it, I'll do that. I'll work with you to do that. Since members of the town council are on it, should I try to do it on a Monday evening when neither? Are there any Monday evenings that are available?
Yes, only one.
Which one is that?
Well, I think it's the first Monday.
The first Monday.
When the board of supervisors has their meeting. I'm just, the first Monday is their own, second Monday is yours, the third Monday is Rockin' Week for Environmental Protection, and then the fourth Monday is the planning issue. Now, as the, you could politely ask RLP if they would change their date because you, you should have priority over non-profit that's using space, but they've been using that date for a long time. If they were going to change it, I would like to give them plenty of time to find another meeting. How about using the date of the planning commission?
Especially since we're already going to be meeting on the 14th. We have some work to do, but.
So you might want to use this month's planning commission meeting to jar you in meeting with the council. No, you need May, May.
No, the April. I'd rather meet sooner or later.
April, so why don't we do that? So, I mean.
What do you think?
Are, are, is there anybody that is interested in being on these committees? Are they available on the fourth Monday of this month?
Caroline, what do you think? What's your date?
Well, I think you take some prep, so I think May would be better.
May. And let's just go with, you said the first Monday is available in May? Let's just go with the first Monday in May. And we'll retain our planning admission meeting the previous Monday.
Okay. I understand this.
And I'll work on taking this language.
Oh, for ease, it'll be the seventh, it'll make sense.
Seventh. I'll work through.
And then we can get this and.
Yep.
With, we'll pass that.
Okay.
You want it at seven?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, is that, have you done that? All right, the next subject is the authorization of a hearing.
No, no, we don't see.
I have to write one on. Just want to tell you the much. In stock. We've discussed this several times, let me just frame it. Everybody knows the IN is doing in stock, maybe a weekend. It's going to bring a significant number of people to the town, to the county. The town has a history of pro tourism. We have, for example, kicked in $5,000 a couple of years ago for the Artisan Trail project, where they were raising 15 in total, the town kicked in $5. The town kicked in approximately $5,000 to build and reprogram what it was, is, the tourist center. And when the IN had its 30th anniversary, the town took out a paid advertisement in a program that they circulated. And as everyone recalls, Bonnie Moore has been running this for the IN, approached us a couple of months ago. My sense was that there is a general consensus that we should be supporting this. There's been some conversations back and forth. Actually, not very many. But what has been, such money would be allocated toward a, the town's website being prominently displayed on all marketing material. I shouldn't say prominently, there wasn't debate what that means, but would be displayed on all marketing material that the IN puts out. All press releases, all marketing efforts on their part will prominently, what did you say, we're going to list the town. The, there's an ability if you want to have onsite distribution point for anything that we might want to distribute, such as brochures, maps, locations of things to do, places to go. That same kind of material can be distributed in advance of people coming here as well as at the event itself. Let's come to outline of how, if we were to do this, and if we were to do $5,000, they would have to do that exact amount. That's how much money would be spent. Let me point out that the IN is inviting everybody for free to the town. Now, of course, that was offered before we even talked about spending any money, so be clear on that, but nevertheless, that's a pretty generous offering on their part. And in the context of us marketing this town as a unique place for people to come to, not just this particular weekend, but all times, I think it's well worth doing. And what we're really doing is riding on, instead of going out and, for example, running ads on someone's website or whatever, saying, "Come here." We're taking advantage of the fact there's actually something special for people to come here, attract a lot of folks here, and they're going to spend money here and around the county. So that's my basic thinking on, on any, anybody's thoughts, questions. Before I forget, I, I know we've talked about this, but I don't want to forget. There are going to be fireworks that night. And they are going through the process of approaching the town and also to the extent they need to approach the county, or if they really don't have to. And those fireworks will be on in property. But I think people will be quick to realize that you can come to the town or surrounding parts of the town and watch fireworks for free, and listen to music for free. It's going to be a great night for tools. But I would imagine that there'd be a goodly number of people, given that the scene will be properly promoted, who are going to take advantage of the Sunday night fireworks, is what I'm assuming. Presumably it's going to be pretty, well, these are our last experience with them. It'll be very good. Billy, you have an example? Go ahead, Daniel.
I think people are talking about that, and they expect to be able to see that, even if they're not at the event.
Yeah.
A lot of people are excited about that.
I guess. Everybody's wanting fireworks back here for 4th of July, not to take them away from the spirit of the festival. But here we go, Sunday night fireworks would make sense.
Mr. Mayor, so getting back to how the $5,000 should be used. I haven't totally, I'm going in a different direction, but I just thought I'd throw it out and I wrote something up.
We can determine, but.
Yeah, okay, this is just another idea.
How just to observe, girl?
In observance of the 40th anniversary of the Inn at Little Washington, the Town of Washington, this is if we agree to this, is donating $5,000 to the IN to be used for educational culinary purposes, specifically for children of Rockin' County. These county children include, among other, the Culinary Classica High School, 4-H Clubs, CCLC, Girl Scouts and Boys Scouts. It was just an idea I had. And they could do things like give the kids a tour of the kitchen, tour of the gardens, they could, someone, one of the chefs could come speak to a culinary class, they could have a culinary student shadow a chef. And so it was just one of my ideas.
Well, mildly off, I think, I think it's something that's said from my observation would be, if we're going to go down that road and be specific, Patrick has set up his own foundation to do something like that, but regardless of that, we would have to talk to them and see whether they want to do that and take up that time and whatnot, so.
Or we could donate to that foundation.
I mean.
Are they looking for the $5,000, whatever it is, for, to help put this thing on?
They're looking out for it. They're looking, they think it's a good idea to help market this, which is in the interest of the town and the county to have more people show up. That's it.
Well, marketing is if you just get your, something that I use it to do this. This certainly looks like a hassle. That's a bad idea, but maybe it's a good idea.
The $5,000 isn't that much for marketing, really, considering what they're doing. I think it's more to show support. They...
Part of it's to show support.
I think the mayor's really framed it in the terms that are contemplated by law, that you can expend money to other organizations or even private individuals at times. If it furthers governmental purpose. And governmental purpose, in this case, is the marketing of the town as a unique place to visit, whatever. And in doing that, it's going to increase, hopefully, the, or the number of people present, revenue to businesses that are, that are in town, that have some effect on property values, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, it's pretty tangible. But you can market the town and I think you've set forth a number of reasons, I've written them all down. And then the fact that the town has contributed in the past, this is one of the news. But it's not a donation, contribution. It's for the purpose of marketing the town and on the condition that the town's website be displayed on marketing material. That's what you're about.
The only thing I would add, John, is I see it a little bit more broadly. I don't think, I think it's not only the town that's going to benefit, the county's going to benefit. And one might say, well, the county's problem, we're taking advantage of it, not ours. So I think we're all one and the same entity, so I think that money spent that would encourage people on Saturday and Monday to go to Gdino Winery, for example, fill in the blank, any other venue in the county, as well as those in the town, is valuable. It's valuable to the county, and it's also valuable to the town. The whole effort of the years where we've tried to market is premised on the notion that it is valuable for the people who live here and work here to have visitors come to spend money so you can maintain the lifestyle that folks have. So I actually sort of see this, just as we spent money on Artisans Trail, right, and maybe a fifth of the Artisans Trail members in Washington, probably nine and a fifth, but we did it for the greater good. Same thing with the tourist center. We did that for the greater good because we're, in my view, the town and the county are intertwined. I just add that. That's where I think.
If you think about the things that Patrick also does to market the town, just on his own, without us, like teaching classes or having big signings and talks in DC, Saltwood Club, other places, I think he knows a tremendous amount to market the town, and it's a given penny.
Brad, Jerry?
Brad?
We had talked at one point that asking the person from the Inn who would come to us, to come up with a proposal of how they would want to send $5,000. Did she ever give that?
She did come up with a proposal, which I've been following on, going back and sort of having an interchange with her. There's some aspects of the proposal, but I guess I just sort of felt otherwise.
Right.
But the bulk of what was being proposed is just what I've said, which is to say, thank you, town's website, everything they do, and the prominent way, all press, all marketing, because you're going to do this, it's certainly not that anyway. Not going to say the Inn is located in Rixeyville or something.
Right.
I understand that. But it's not like, you know, 10 years ago, we took out ads and they're like, this is... This is like, this is better than that. And...
It's beneficial to them too. If we link our website to all this information, this is how people are going to find other places to stay, and that always will be the best thing. They're going to be able to find the other B and Bs, restaurants, and stuff like this.
I'd be, if it's appropriate, I'd be curious to hear if anyone in the public has any thoughts.
Yes. This would be the curmudgeon in the group. We're trying to build up a, a contentment fund. We increased our water and sewer rights to try to build up our funds so that we can do things like the well, the water pipes, et cetera, et cetera. And you know, we're, we've had given all this money to all these groups. And it's made it harder for us to build that fund up. I'm sorry the Inn asks. One hates to say no to an organization that has done as much for the town as the Inn has, but geez. We, I mean, we're already giving, giving money to the food pantry, which I think is important.
Yeah, we're... Wish there was more in the public here tonight.
I guess I would say, I mean, you probably know the businesses of Rapid County. Businesses of Rapid County is doing a lot around this too, so there could be some opportunity to coordinate. There's a separate initiative within businesses.
Well, the businesses of Rapid County, Teresa Wood is talking to the Inn.
Yeah.
And they're trying, they're going to work together in some fashion.
Yeah.
And I was going to call them Teresa today to find out how far along they are on that.
They're moving, I'd say, we're involved in the discussions with some other folks in town and the county to tie things to In Stock, so I think there's some good opportunity.
Just to make it more of that one day into a weekend, into a month long.
I mean, if I may say so, I've put together the Inn and Teresa.
Right.
Yeah.
In order to have the business community of Rapid County understand that they're, could benefit from this. It's not just a law.
Yeah.
The law of the town, where the Inn benefited from it, so you got the whole weekend. Which is, yeah, I just think everybody benefits from these things. Where can you go?
Well, and the, the marketing value there is, is a lot larger if you want return guests, you want...
It's simple. It's kind of like the Inn, more on Gdinos. I keep referring to Gdinos, but you don't feel it. Or anywhere else, you know. You want more to do, not just be a one-off.
The set of all, all the people that are going to come out for this event, there are going to be a lot of people coming out for this event. And they're going to generate your meal taxes and room taxes and all those things. So it... There's a lot of justification.
It's real dollars, I hear from you.
It's real dollars.
Unless it weren't the Inn, we wouldn't even have the debate of it. Right? Anything else, you know?
We know that this doesn't matter. Do we know that the county is going to need a donation too?
I'm sure they have not asked the board of supervisors in county for their mission, like they are working with the local business group, as we've discussed. Board of supervisors in this town have slightly different views on the subject. Would you agree to which one wants to encourage tourism and put money behind it?
So do we need to get with, are you, get to meet, or get to meet with Bonnie again?
We can meet with Bonnie at town hall.
Yeah, it's a new zone. Or...
I'd be happy to have anybody in this group that wants to join in and sort out precisely what it's about. That would be easier than... I'd be happy to have anybody else above.
I was just asking to see if you were going to talk to her again before we move forward tonight. That was my...
I'll do whatever is the pleasure of the Town Council of Washington, Virginia.
I, I hear some, some questions from the public. And I think it would be very helpful if the Town Council is going to spend $5,000, that members of the public can understand that the town is actually not losing $5,000, but gaining perhaps even that much in terms of meals and lodging taxes, or certainly not immediately on that weekend, but the long-term positive impact will be more money coming to the town by making this investment. I think if we can make that case at a future Town Council meeting, that may help with some of the reservations that some of the public have.
So hence the meaning. Hence the meaning, more understanding of Bonnie's ideas for this money.
I'd be agree. I'm thinking it more of, I hate to say it, but more of a number cruncher.
Well, if you want to crunch the numbers.
Kind of more of a...
If you want to do, I mean, two points. If you want to do that, you'd take .025 divided into $5,000, and which comes out to whatever number.
Right.
And one would say, do we think it's going to generate that amount? And one could do that. I frankly think, and that's well worth doing, but it's something I feel strongly about with the county I'm talking to. If, if you have to prove you're going to get ROI on this particular event, then you probably won't. So then don't do it. Don't support anything. Don't market. Don't think long-term. Don't try and build a brand. Don't try and do anything. I mean, it's worth doing the number. The number might come out and say, yeah, you might get half of that. That's pretty good. That's a pretty force. You can do it right now.
Might get you $200,000.
Okay, so...
You might get it that weekend, but then you have to look at the long.
Well, that's right. And, I mean, I don't know whether you'd get it that weekend, but I think over the long run, look, we've gone, I mean, I'm looking at the numbers. The meals and lodging revenue in this town is going up $100,000 in approximately nine years. That would be fair enough, starting from a low base. The economy is terrible.
That's a good way.
That is the source of most of our revenue. And the Inn employs 145 people. It's the second largest employer in this county. And every B and B and restaurant and whatever in this county, in this town, this town, are benefiting, et cetera. I mean, if it weren't the... If, if there is something fundamentally wrong with the proposition, then I think we should stop promoting anything.
I don't...
And I'm not putting you on the spot, but I just...
I don't, I haven't heard that from anybody. What I've heard is...
I'll just be a... I've had a rough time.
You have. You certainly have that right.
But that's a cheesy excuse.
Brad, can I go first?
Yeah.
Promotion of the town, I think, is, any town, any city, everywhere you go, they get involved with that. So the quick calculation is $5,000 to generate $200,000 in meals and lodging in order to get even payback. Will that happen over the course of 12 months? It's anybody's guess. By virtue of In Stock, is that going to bring back people who have come to the Inn before but haven't been back for some period of time? And now they've revisited for In Stock, may they return yet again? Possibilities. The other thing is to understand that as we have rearranged our finances, that the $5,000 comes out of our general fund, if that's the right term. But the waterworks and the wastewater system are set up to follow their own accounting. So we're tracking expenses and income separately, with the intention that future needs will be served by the monies that are collected over time. So taking the $5,000 now and using it is not going to imperil any of our infrastructure in the future.
You're going to make some money on the usage of this?
Yeah.
Why don't all those people come to town, you're going to make, you're going to use for it?
Right, right. So there's, there's some revenue coming there, however much it is. But I think, like we say, I don't think the $5,000 is going to imperil anything in the future of the, of the infrastructure. And going to our task force, one of the goals that I see under infrastructure is to figure out, you know, where can economies may be improving even further. So that $5,000, you know, that was in the general fund that you suddenly say, oh, we need that to go and fix a pipe. No, it's not going to be there, but monies will be available. So I think promotion of this is mine. I think the returns are there. It can't be looked at as simply a payment out and you need a payment back. It is evolutionary. And even if we got zero back off that $5,000, we have still, you know, we put the promotion out there, we planted the seed of interest to visitors that may come back, or they tell friends, it's that whole thing. It's, it's what advertising is all about, and that's essentially what we're doing. We're going to buy $5,000 with advertising.
We couldn't hire a PR firm for this.
For this kind of money.
There's also a token of our appreciation to be, for all the things that we've done for the last 40 years.
Right, right. So I think, I think it's a, it's a fair and reasonable amount for what the return to the town is. I think it's, you know, very within around what we should be doing. And I think the meeting, and here, here, yeah, the task force, task force meeting, you know, whether we're saying, let's approve this now, or whether you want to disqualify that task force. And some of this falls during that meeting. That the intention of the town under the Tourism Task Force, is that what it's called?
Tourist Development.
Tourist Development. That's a subject, you know, out of that, we come back to council and say, yeah, the task force says yes, let's do this, let's prove this, let's move forward. And that way, you'll have the opportunity maybe to get some of that input as to what is, what is the Inn planning, what is, what is their promotional ideas? And they may have some input as to say, well, the, the money that the town gives us, maybe we'll do this specifically. They may have some interesting ideas out of utilizing that $5,000, you know, to even promote the town further. And we can kind of say, at their guidance, we're going to get even better than just typically handing them a check and letting them do whatever. So I think the task force is a great platform, you know, for that discussion to begin. Right, Gary?
Hi, Sharon?
Yeah, as the saying goes, don't muzzle the ox that tread the corn.
Say that again.
Don't muzzle the ox that tread the corn. In other words, the Inn is supplying all this other stuff, so it's like, it spreads out into the whole community, the whole area. It's benefiting from the ox corn, the grain load. So, you know, I want to stop the ox from reaching over there now and then to get a little taste of something to eat as it treads on.
I'm not sure Patrick's going to like being, you know, very good oxen, but besides that, I think he'd agree.
I think he would love it.
If I may kick in something. I've said this before, but, you know, it shouldn't be overlooked. The town is in the enviable, enviable position that it doesn't have a real estate property tax, or personal property tax, which most towns do have. It generates so much money from these sources that we've been discussing, that that hasn't been necessary.
With Ricardo, he said, Brad, for the first 98% of the agreement, as everyone. And maybe getting the task force together to negotiate with the Inn, but that means getting people on the task force. It means Patrick can't be on the task force and he's already on and designated as. It seems to me that, I'm all, I'm very happy to have a mechanism or re-further define what it is we want out of this. And there's a certain amount of time still, you know, to do that. We don't have to approve this today. I just... I guess that I did, I wish we didn't, we're in a situation where it all seems so conditional of support.
Yeah.
We're going, we're going, in 30 minutes, or 10 minutes, we're going to decide whether we want to give the food pantry $2,000. I'm willing to bet we'll decide that in 10 seconds. Now, after this conversation, maybe we'll decide more. Maybe you can't measure, but, you know, I just think we're.
Well, I think if the $5,000 doesn't make any difference one way or the other, but those people are still kind of tanned. They're still going to be drinking the bed and the breakfast as well. So looking at it as I get the monetary return, I don't think is the way we need to look at it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's, you know, a lot of communities spend huge amounts of money for most themselves. And this is all in that same genre of promotion. And so from a task force, you know, defining what we want or like that, you know, maybe it's just a simple statement that, you know, that the monies are used in the best interest of promotion of the town. We just kind of leave it very generic like that, and it's done.
Well, we could do that and we could ask the three people on the Tourism Development Committee, at least, Mary Ann, Klaus, and Patrick. Obviously, Patrick can't be involved in the discussion. So I'd be more than happy to have Mary Ann and Klaus. And indeed, there could be another person at the town council that, you know, to refine what.
I guess I just think a generic statement of promotion, that's what we wish is the use of it.
I think everybody here on the council wants to do something. Do, it's just that we didn't know exactly how to frame it. And, but nobody here is saying they don't want to support the Inn.
Got another hammer.
All right.
So do we, what, you're supposed to consider it tonight? Or are we going to donate anything tonight, or what are we going to do?
I'll agree with that. I'll agree with it. I would propose that we, unless Mr. Bennett has trouble with this, that we make a general motion to the town to support of in-stock prepared to spend $5,000 conditioned on working out specific uses of that money, subject to review at our next meeting. The point of that is to equate what you just said, everybody wants to do something. And the "it" is still ill-defined. And I think that's, I think that's a better outcome than saying.
We had a discussion of several meetings here already, so we should move this along. Can we do that, Mr. Bennett?
Well, that, the effect of that is you have a conditional expenditure of $5,000. When you reconvene, you agree on the expenditures. So like, it's sort of authorizing.
Yes, it's a valid point. It's not a vote to spend the money, it's a vote to support the economy, that money will be spent. Yeah, I'll put it in the motion.
Did that answer your question?
Were you ready? Is everybody, did you?
Sean has another question.
Well, anyone that wants to talk in the audience, we're not going to have you do it.
Yeah, I was just thinking that Mary Ann had a good point there too, because it brought in a lot of other things, if it was okay with the Inn with that. But she had a good idea of, I mean, it brings in a lot of community. And it's, you know, with anybody that's but $5,000 or whatever, but that did bring in reasons, you know, to donate that. It's, you know, it's bringing in more to the community and the children and, you know, possible workers in the future for the Inn, you know, who knows? Someone might want to go into that field. So, I mean, she would have to, of course, as we stated, check that the Inn, that's, you know, something they can add in or whatever, but that would justify it.
Thank you. Ray, do you?
Yeah, John, I think there's a difference between a contribution to the Inn and a contribution to the food pantry.
I accept that, Ray, because I apologize for the.
We've got an elephant in the room that we all know what it is and the potential harm it could cause the council and the town, which is there is an element in the county that will jump on the transfer of funds from the town to the Inn. They did it before. Whether their arguments were sound or not, we never found out, thankfully. But I think what you can do is similar to what you're suggesting is we're not writing a check for $5,000 and giving it to the Inn. If you authorize the expenditure of up to $5,000 in conjunction with the Inn's September celebration, and then go to the Inn and say, how can, you know, is there a way you can spend this money that we can contribute directly to that purpose? Or come up with some idea that they're not just going to pay the janitor to clean up the grounds after the thing's over? That they're going to do something with that money that is beneficial to both the Inn and the town? So that you're not immediately challenged once again that you're transferring public funds to a private business entity.
This may or wouldn't, in my mind, including the town's website and all the materials, is that worth $5,000 if this is my mind? Just that one thing.
Well, it's very tangible.
Yeah.
I agree with, I sort of, if I may, I agree sort of generally what you said, right? Except the part where I do think we are talking about some tangible items that one would get for the $5,000.
That's right, that's right.
One might, more tangible, or better defined tangible, or whatever, but, but.
You're getting that.
There's just pretty specific things.
Well, that would be, I mean, if we're, we're, we're in effect paying them for promoting.
Performing advertising.
In conjunction with the promotions that they're going to do through something like the website. I mean, that makes it much more legitimate, I would think. Because otherwise you're going to have, you know, the pitchforks and marchers are going to be outside the door again.
There's no church involved with the town. That was a silly idea.
So you do that with them?
Yeah.
Do it all the time?
Right, we have to do it all the time.
We've done it.
We do it all the time. And we're just shy about the elephant in the room. So I think it's solidly the elephant. Well, Ray, I think we're sort of at a similar point. That is to say, anyone filling the words that it is the town's, I propose, I make a motion that the town makes an expression of support, change orders if someone wants. This is not a contract, an expression of support for the marketing efforts undertaken by the Inn to promote in-stock and directly and indirectly the town and the county. And that the specifics, in addition to ones that have already been mentioned, be further defined. And we then vote at the next meeting after, so long motion, after the Tourism Committee representatives, meet the representatives of the Inn, excluding Patrick O'Connell, who's on the Tourism Committee. Does that make sense?
It does make sense.
Up to $5,000.
The expression of support of our.
Ray, does that sort of vote?
We have guests, we have to go back.
You're on the front?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm back there. All right, I make that motion. I'll say it.
There you go. Now, just so you understand, if Patrick isn't there, that's fine, but you three can't be there on the Tourism Committee. Oh, yes, you can, because it's advertising, right? It's on the Saturday.
Why don't you give him this?
Yes, it's on the Saturday, yeah, that's fine.
It's tourist development.
Whatever. I almost said that first question, nevermind. It's all good, because it's going to be our job.
That's a rule.
Before we go, there's a discussion. Now, part of it is semantics, and certainly I'm not the wordsmith, or wordsman. But I think that we're using the wrong verbiage. This is not an expression of support. This is not a contribution. What this is, is an investment, pure and simple, as one end leading to another end. We do a contribution for, to the food pantry. We did a contribution to the artisans trail, because those, I presume the artisans trail is a nonprofit? Because those are nonprofits. This is not a contribution. This is not an expression of support. This is an investment. And so I would recommend the use of that term rather than an expression of support.
Totally agree. I think that's what it is.
I'd be happy to, I think that's exactly what it is.
So amend your motion to make an investment of up to $5,000. Is that the word you want to use?
I would add that an investment to further the interests of the town and its citizens.
Can you just a second?
Yes.
Second few minutes?
Yes.
So can somebody read the whole thing now?
Well, I'll make, I'll stab at it. Mayor Public made a motion that the town make an investment of up to $5,000 to further the interest of the town and the citizens for the marketing efforts undertaken by the Inn and promote, to promote the Inn and to promote.
To promote what's in stock.
To promote in-stock.
To promote the town.
The town.
For the in-stock event.
To promote the town for the in-stock event?
And that the specifics be further defined in the council vote next month after the meeting, the tourism meeting meets and comes back as a recommendation to the town. Do we allow that?
Voting regulations?
Voting regulations, I think it's just a general definition of. People call it the desire. What do you use for?
Yes, at this point, you're not spending any money. I think when you get down to that, the rule of procedure is to get really specific with this. But at this point, you stated a governmental purpose and can be more specific if you want, but I think specificity comes when you actually expend the money at the next meeting.
So you want to tie up this stuff up with task force?
I would recommend it, because I'm not sure the task force is necessarily going to meet.
All right, so we're just going to say promote the town, and he says town, but we're just going to say the town is.
Citizens.
And I, I mean, what about voting next month? Do you want to be that specific?
As may be hereafter determined by council.
I think what I'm going to do is kind of clean that up a little bit and have you. Let's go through the agenda. Mayor, something made a motion that the town make an investment of up to $5,000 to further the interest of the town and its citizens for the marketing effort undertaken by the Inn to promote in-stock.
Well, isn't really.
To promote the town through the in-stock event.
Yes.
To promote the town's interests. Through the in-stock event.
To promote the town's interests through the in-stock event. Okay, and then as hereafter determined by the town.
The final vote can be determined.
Determined by the final vote, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, you're talking about hereafter.
I just wasn't words. You're not going to miss me. Hereafter determined by a council vote?
You must sound right.
What we're doing is we're providing a level of support. What the motion needs to say at the end is that the town will make the final vote hereafter. I don't know exactly, I don't want to put words in the mayor's mouth. But I think the council is saying, perhaps as a second sentence in the motion, that a final vote will be taken hereafter.
Language. As may be hereafter determined by council.
As may hereafter be determined by council. As may hereafter be determined. That is the second sentence that you can have. A final vote will be taken by town council as hereafter determined.
Okay.
I need to begin.
Yeah, I think if actually going forward by maybe to.
When you vote, you make a.
Well, you don't even have to, you seem to have any emotion, really, does it?
It's an indication of our support of the.
Investment.
One of the things that we talked about was that we wanted to get some more specificity from the. more specificity from the people at the Inn about how the investment would be used.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting. I don't think we're making any motion. And I don't think it has to be a motion at all. I think you can just say, let's go talk to the Inn, see what they want to do. And our intention is to go $5,000 if it meets our needs.
And I think the motion is basically that we're making, that we had an intent to invest that $5,000.
Yes, that's important, but we haven't done that before.
So we're moving baby steps, Mr. Mayor, but we're getting...
Do you want to roll call the...
Yeah.
If anyone doesn't... Did you have everything you have? I think I have it. And I will send it to the mayor and Fred and Mr. Bennett. Make sure that I haven't dispelled anything.
Okay, so we're gonna do roll call?
Yes, and let's start with Ben.
With me?
Yeah, we're just gonna shake it up a little bit, so we're not always...
I vote yes, because A, it will generate monetary return short-term through the meals and lodging tax. B, it will generate monetary return long-term through the meals and lodging tax. C, funds coming from the meals and lodging tax funds. Where this investment will come from the meals and lodging tax, not from sewer and water fees. Where it contains a C fund that's being built. D, this is a promotion of the town future. E, the town will receive advertising from this investment.
Can you give me that?
Yeah.
All right, but does that have one yes?
That was a very good yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, you like...
You have to embellish it.
Yes, I second the yes.
And I don't teach...
Did you say yes? Is this all yes? And you just shoot the "yes" in an email, okay?
I'm gonna give it to you.
Just give it to me right...
Sneaker mail.
I like that. I would say rapidly, and I'm not so sure that that is working properly. Happy. What's next?
All right, now it's time for the vote. Am I correct this time? We need to authorize a public hearing on the budget for the next meeting, May 14, with appropriate advertising. You know, my word, I want to go through what the basics are. In this budget draft that everybody has, a few of you, actually most of you, many of us participated in putting this together. I don't know if I was just an appetite to go through the basics.
Would you ask any questions?
Considering the lateness of the hour.
Well, that's what, that's, you know, we should be spending more. This actually is worth spending a fair amount of time, it seems to me. But we are sort of running out of time. Let me make a general point. Freshen your resume. The waterworks under this budget is almost self-sufficient, with short $7,000. The wastewater continues to be not self-sufficient by a significant amount. Those gaps are being funded by the surplus of... The surplus generated by the town budget. And that surplus is somewhere in $170,000 or $80,000. Sorry, I had it out, no, no. And what we have, as everybody knows, revenues to the town largely come from this category, meals and lodging. Expenses we kept low in terms of other government administration. And that surplus goes to fund key to the waterworks. Our goal is to have that fully fund itself, right? And the wastewater, we continue to run out $100,000 negative in terms of operating revenues and expenses. And then on top of that, there is a $170,000 loan. So that's where the big gap is. In terms of all the other elements, they're pretty straightforward. Does that pretty much capture most of those who were in the budget committee? And we'll have more, we have the public hearing, we'll have some, something, that few pages that make clearer what I just said. So do I have any questions, observations? Do I have a motion to authorize a public hearing for this 2018-19 budget?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Second?
Yes.
Yes, I was gonna start with this language, didn't I?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Air be vacancy and possible appointment. We have a vacancy if people know. We are looking for some candidates. It's a process that's sort of ongoing, and we have perfect candidate raising their hand will do it.
I'll add, I'm trying to...
That's right.
That's kind of my fault. I hope all of you will actually be looking at your neighbor and...
Yeah, we're looking for suggestions. No way else. All right, okay.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Before you leave old business, I have one item. Before you leave old business?
Yes.
I have an item related to the action that was taken at the March meeting on the special use permit.
Yes.
There was some confusion generated on my part, as well as the council's part, as to whether or not I had the current copy of the ordinance. And Mr. Bennett indicated that there had been a subsequent amendment, which dealt with the point I was trying to make. After the meeting, I checked my copy of the ordinance with Mr. Bennett. They were identical. There was no subsequent amendment to the August 12, 2013...
I have to take exception to that. I have to take exception to that.
Do you have a copy of that amendment?
I did not agree with you that...
What?
I did not agree with you that...
Well, you can disagree with me, but I want to make this point. And the point I was trying to make was to bring to the attention of the council that in the definitions that were adopted simultaneously with that 2013 amendment, they define meals and meal seedings. And what the definition says, and I'll just read the one sentence that's pertinent. And you'll recall, the SUP was for two seedings at dinner for the Foster Harris house. And the definitions provide, meals are limited to one seating and include only one breakfast, one lunch, and one dinner per day. So I think you've got an SUP that is in contravention of the language of your ordinance.
Mr. Bennett?
I don't have any time left. I've heard Mr. Gooch has set up. Didn't know the book and everything. As I said, I was operating on what was in the copy of the code that I had. It's supposed to be current. I think the misunderstanding may be in order that these things were adopted.
They were adopted simultaneously at the same meeting. If you'll read the minutes, I've got the minutes from the meeting where they were adopted. And the ordinance amendment and the definition amendment were adopted at the same meeting. And I'm not telling the council what they need to do about it. That's up to the council. But on my reputation, I felt like a doddering old fool at that meeting. Because I came to that meeting with a copy of the ordinance, and I was told that I didn't know what I was talking about. And I take exception to that.
So Ray, what is it you think the council should do?
That's for the council to decide. It's not for me to tell you what to do.
Mayor, may I say something?
Sure.
Mr. Gooch and I have had numerous interactions over the years, and I hold him in the highest regard. I hold his legal judgment, legal abilities in the highest regard. People have different interpretations, differences of views and opinions, everything from time to time. There is no implication whatsoever that they in any way impugn your integrity, your legal knowledge, your legal abilities. It's just a good faith disagreement on point. And that is it. I would hope that I'd only stood up once and had, you know, different information in my hand than somebody else had, but it happens. It just, nobody is saying that it's a result of any lack of judgment or skill or anything else, because I hold all of that in the highest regard, Mr. Gooch.
Well, I don't understand your point, but you make your point, and I've made my point, so... But I think when you have a word in an ordinance, and you know what, want to know what the definition is, you go to the definitions. And the definitions define meals and meal seedings.
I thought the reading was, he was applying for special use above beyond what it was already. Was he applying for, instead of having the 6:30 be six and until 11, and also to have two seedings in that time instead of one? Wasn't that only applying for? So how is that, because I look at everything else, and we were already applying for special use? So that really didn't, that was, he was asking, can I do above what was already written down? That's what we were, I thought that's what we were asking the council to do. He was applying for half hour on the low side and two seedings instead of one. So, I mean, that was above and beyond whatever was written down before. That's what the special exception was for, Ray.
I guess I'm not forgetting a legal. Okay, it's not my strength. But my own observation, I'd be happy to have any of my colleagues here there. If we have a situation where the judgment of our town council was that it's appropriate for us to do what we do. And Mr. Gooch disagrees with that. Secondly, that in the somewhat confusing heat of the discussion, where there's a lot of, you've got this piece of paper in that, that you, Mr. Gooch, were made to feel as if your legal knowledge is being questioned, in a very basic way. And I surely don't think that was the intent of Mr. Gooch.
It was not. I'm not suggesting that. I merely say...
And I think it's very, I mean, I understand your, you know, you said what you just said a few minutes ago, about how you might have made the look. I appreciate that. It would not be, you don't want to look like that, I'm feeling this. And I think in the sort of heat of the discussion, nobody purposely said something to make you feel that way. And so you get that aspect, then you get the, what is the, what is the, what were the merits of the argument? And the man who is our town council argued that we were our right to do what we're doing. I'm not sure what else there is to say beyond that.
John, hi. You had said something that you would take another look at it. I guess my concern is, are we on solid legal ground to have voted the way we did?
Based on the information I have, yes. Now, going back through all the records and minutes and things to see if the copy of the code that I have is accurate, that would be the next undertaking.
It would be what?
That would be, that would be the next undertaking.
So you had said you'd be, you'd be taking another look at it, so is that...
Yeah, this is, this is the basic, this agreement that Mr. Gooch and I had, that even accepting the definition that exists in that form, council thereafter adopted amended special use permit to permit this. And as a matter of statutory structures, I said that evening, I'll just say again, I don't know if I had a good think about this, but this is my view, with the specific controls in general. And when council adopted this new provision, very specific to SUPs for what may be the definition, that is specific, like controls or the general definition, it may be in the definition section of the ordinance.
But it was a new definition adopted to support the new special use permit language. It's right here in the minutes of that August meeting. I'm not asking for an apology for may have been a misunderstanding. I'm merely saying the record should be correct. And the council should have, when I was on council, we had an ordinance book. Every member of council had an ordinance book to have all of the ordinances in it. And we were encouraged to bring it to every council meeting. And you need, when you're acting on an application, to apply a section of the ordinance, you certainly should have that ordinance in front of you.
So is it reasonable to, Mr. Bennett, to review those documents on a timely basis? Just to make sure that everything is in order that it should be, according to when adoptions were adopted, the particular ordinance, you know, based on the time you're referencing, anything subsequent to that? So that maybe some of us will start to, because I'm a little confused as I'm listening back and forth. So that maybe some of us will start to, because I'm, I'm a little confused as I'm listening back and forth and I'm just thinking, you know, maybe there needs to be a chronology. And maybe there ought to be that ordinance book that we all should have. I don't think that's a bad idea by any means, but I think, you know, there's...
The ordinance has at the bottom the date that the amendment was adopted.
Right.
And the definition, the definition section of the ordinance says, it says Article 3, excuse me, Article 6.1.2.8.6, adopted August 12, 2013. Definition of B and B contained in definitions amended August 12, 2013.
So as I'm saying, it's from that, maybe from that being coming forward, you know, if there's any other documents or anything else in the timeline that may be pertinent.
I think the minutes of the August meeting.
Well, that's it. What else is there that, you know, just sort of provide a little more clarity? And again, whether there was a misunderstanding, one document not being synchronized with the other, two parties having documents that aren't synchronized, I'm not sure. But that's all I'm saying is, maybe if we had a little chronology, that may point some of this out. It may present a shortcoming that we've got and we don't realize is really there, so.
And then maybe inconsistent documents.
Yes, that's what, right, that's what I'm sort of leading to. And that's where maybe the chronology will help maybe point that out if such a situation is the case. But then again, it may also just shed light on the decisions we made. Not, not that we're going to reverse or change things, but it just helps us to come forwards to where we are. And I think that, I think that is certainly worth a lot of effort, at least we have some idea of how we got to where we are.
I think the deciding factor was...
Sharon Lawler, please.
I think the deciding factor was when he was looking up the definition of restaurants was kind of the deciding factor about which way to go with the situation. Because it suffered with the definition of the restaurants that made the last decision. From that, I think if you look back at the minutes, it suffered with the definition of the restaurant that eventually got the decision that it was all painted, is what I would...
I can just ask, wait, would you want to move on to the next question? Is there, is part of the issue that there's some inconsistency in documents? Or is it, the question, one of the...
Are you asking me?
Well, I'm asking Mr. Bennett. I guess I'm asking him. Trying to figure out what we ought to be doing next. And all I know is we made a decision that was based on the advice of our council. I think it's worth a council reviewing it, but I believe you have. I'm not sure what it is that we should do.
I can, I can be bored. We can look into this further.
I'm sorry?
I can be bored. We can look into this further. I mean, I don't keep all the documentation here. So that's, I'm just bored. I say bored because she can just show me the paper.
So you're going to look into it and then move it through to the next meeting, or? Whenever you have a chance.
Yeah, just until it starts. Okay. New business. We have a proposed continuation of our wastewater contract with ESS. Everybody knows that they've been monitoring, managing, running our wastewater system since day one. They have been doing a good job. Could be better, but they've been doing a good job. And they have come in with no changes in the contract other than increasing rates in about, I think it's 1.8% or 2%, something in there. So I would describe this as a very modest increase. It follows on what they've essentially been doing to mind people because they've been raising rates about 2% every year. An exception about two years ago, when they took on responsibility for our water system and incorporated that into the contract for the same amount of money. And the time we saved $30,000 or so on the water system. The name, this is a revised contract. Goes into effect when? On July? They set us this some time ago and there was some confusion on it. But that's a basically...
Well, they're actually...
Same contract, same rate.
April 1st.
Excuse me, so it's due...
They, they had sent this a couple months ago, but they've been, even apparently they were lost. They may have to look in it.
Mistake and not sending it here. So...
So are we looking to continue this?
I would recommend that we continue using that. With the cap, I would recommend that we continue using that. With the caveat that we continue to look at ways that there are alternatives to some sort.
Are you looking to get this approved? It's already in effect.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, it's not really in effect.
Well, I think it'd be good if it was approved for me.
Yeah.
Brad, and have you and Laura looked at this and you feel comfortable with it?
I've, I've, when I was through the contract, I don't think it was...
Pretty much the same contract, it was not, it's just the numbers have changed a little bit. And they're not a significant change at all. I think that there are things that we can do to save money and I think perhaps we're going to be looking at that. But I don't see any reason not to approve this now because what are you...
In the last...
Based upon the good counsel from Mr. Schneider and from our town clerk, have you a motion?
I second.
And just so you know, in the, your previous, what we set down with the ESS, we made a handful of changes to the contract which were reflected in it. So this renewal just carries forward those things. I don't see any significant things they decided to try to slip in or change. So with that, you know, I have no reason not to go forward with it. And I'll be working with them again as we look into the next year.
Do you need to stop off the next part?
Yes, right, so we roll call it. We've got a first and a second.
I made the motion. I don't know who's second.
I'm ready.
Let's start with Ms. Light. Yes or no?
Well, Fred.
Well, let's get patient with the motion.
We have to motion. I will change the motion.
Yes.
You start with Mary, she would say.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, the last item, we don't have time for that. The aforementioned Rattletick Food Pantry contribution. We made a contribution to pantry for probably five years then. Their event is May, May something like that. And the question is whether we do so again and one reason to do it now rather than wait to the May meeting is that they will be doing various literature and so on and we would be a sponsor. We should be recognized as a sponsor for doing it, so.
I make a motion that we donate the set amount as our usual... It was $2,000? ... donation to the food pantry. Was it $2,000?
$2,000. We got, we got first, you have a second?
I'll say.
Alright. Roll call. Yes, yes.
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 Are you thinking or just running with order you should be in?
If one is all fixed, there are one, okay.
Doesn't matter. It doesn't matter.
You're going to end over your word and one.
Alright. We open a public forum. Any promises or Ivers? I think Nancy has suggested it's time for us all to go home. It's enclosed in the public forum. And motion to adjourn session.
How many of the motion we made is your?
Second.
I'll second the motion.
Roll a favor. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, sir.